Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons and men. With glowing heart we see thee rise, be true nor strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glory of the free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All rise, oh, pampas yours, Nigerians come on day. To serve our father's land, lift up and strength and faith. The level of our heroes was surely worthy in the end. To serve with heart and voice. One nation bound in freedom, we stand unity.
So like we all know, we're here today to reason and brainstorm. It's a town hall meeting of all, just us talking today. What we want to know and what we want. So now we're going to go ahead and do the land acknowledgement. And that will be taken over by by Obiara. Obiara is a certified business analyst, a content writer and entrepreneur. He's passionate about economic empowerment and social services. He currently volunteers as a lead of logistics and imprint planning team at the CNP. Please welcome Obiara. Kindly take your place, please. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So I'll want to take the land acknowledgement. So in the spirit and intent of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's recommendations, we acknowledge the traditional indigenous territories on which we gather at the beginning of all CNP meetings. By learning, understanding and acknowledging, we wish to pay respect to Total Island, sorry, Mother Earth and to the rich indigenous history of Ontario. We recognize that our patience, that our work takes place on traditional indigenous territories across Ontario. We also wish to acknowledge that the CNP head office is located on the traditional indigenous territory of the Huron-Wender, Hondans, Hondans-Soni and most recently the territory of Mississauga of the credit. This territory is part of the dish with the One Spoon Treaty, an agreement between the Anishinaabe, Hondensee and allied nations to peacefully share and care for the resources around the Great Lakes. This territory is also covered by the Opa-Canada Treaties. We wish to express gratitude to Mother Earth and for the resources we are using. And honor all the First Nation, Métis and Inuit people who have been living on the land since time immemorial. Thank you.
Thank you once again. I'm going to repeat myself. Obiara, thank you for the land acknowledgement. It's always necessary to say thank you for our day-to-day living here on Canada and making a thanking land after making it happen. At this juncture, I'm going to be calling on our president, Mrs. Adeji Sola. Atiba, everybody knows her as the, she calls herself the Margaret Toucher. She's a professional herself with RBC. She is a financial planner. She's gone to the ladders of financial services. She's, she's, I call her the materia of everything you want to know about. Kindly join me as I welcome Mrs. Adeji Sola. So tell us who we are and more about Council of Nigerian Professionals.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Patience. And I really, really want to welcome everybody for joining. Thank you so much. I'm seeing some of the founding members and I'm super excited. Maybe this is time to welcome David Digga for joining us today. And all my friends, I think to know almost everybody on the line. Thank you so much. I mean, together we can be much better. Thank you for your support, your understanding, your passion. Again, to Patience, you know, what she's been talking about. The idea is for us to reason together, to brainstorm. But before we move ahead, we want to know where we come from, where we are, to be able to inform where we're going. And so I will talk briefly about that. So who are we? The focus for Council of Nigerian Professionals and the beauty is we have so many other organizations helping in this field right now. This is something that has never happened before in our history. We're seeing a lot more people get engaged in community building, which is super, super exciting. But with Council of Nigeria, our focus is to equip and support Nigerian professionals, in particular, and people of African heritage in general, towards sustainable growth, development and prosperity. And some of the things that we want to do, we were just brainstorming today to know, you know, what really is the issue with our community when we come to Canada? Our marriages are very, very important. Most of our marriages are suffering. Families, the family dichotomy is changed. So it's so important for us to be able to help each other. Leadership, a lot of us are leaders where we're coming from. We have skills, experiences. We want to make sure that we don't discount our skills. And if we're able to get people to hold our hands and support us along the way, it gets better. Supporting immigrants, international students. We know that economic power is really, really important. How can we harness that for ourselves? What can we do to help our children, our youth? And it's so important to understand the multiculturalism of Canada and even the culture. How are things done here? So how do we want to be able to do that? We want to network, which is what we're doing here. And I know that a lot of people will say, oh, we've not been seen face to face. I can't increase my network. Believe you me, even when you come into a Zoom call, a Google Hangout, whatever it is, pick one or two people's name, reach out to them. That's how you increase your network. Because we thought COVID-19 was going to be a sprint. We can see that it's not that anymore. It is a marathon. We're already in third wave. So network even while you're on virtual platforms. We want to mentor our new professionals and even existing professionals. We all need mentoring. Build a notary professional image. The good news is, you know, when I came in, you know, when they talk about Nigerians, they'll always say something negative, but the dynamics have changed. And you and I are the ones changing it because we are professionals. We are adding value to Canada. But how can we do better? We can do better by coming together, supporting each other, building somebody else off, lifting somebody else off. And we want to be role models to our youths and children. And also empower ourselves socially, professionally, economically, so that again, we can harness the benefits of what Canada has for us. And so in 2020, what would we do? Oh, my goodness, we did a lot. We were able to give bursaries to our youth that participated in the Black History Month essay in 2020. We did the same in 2021. It's going to be an annual thing. We did contribute money to faith-based communities, churches and mosques. We all set over 25 events. We hired staff and most of them have gone on to get even better jobs now. We were able to connect with over 250 general members over the phone. We paid services. We paid to our professionals. Because when we're talking about empowering and we keep telling people to volunteer and we're not able to pay, how are we empowering them economically? We were able to do that for our professionals in the year 2020. We did our first CNP documentary, I Life Music Video. I would recommend that you go to CNP and listen to it. It's a wonderful, wonderful way to spend your weekend, reminiscing about all those old days, all this music. We provided over 600 families with raw food stuff during COVID. We provided 250 children with school supplies. And we provided PPE to community members. For the first time, we had events in Calgary, Alberta and also in Ottawa. And these are some of the pictures. So this is Niket Charles. She's actually a fitness coach. She was there to, you know, keep us fit, show us a few things that we can, we can use to stay fit while we stay at home. This lady here was here. She's actually a recruitment manager. She came to talk about what recruiters are looking for. This was one of our staff and this lady actually spoke about schooling during COVID. And these are some of the other events that we had. We had job-ready tactics, interview skills and branding. We had vision board launching. Oh, my goodness, I'm still enjoying my vision board as I'm talking to you because they say a picture speaks a thousand words. So when I look at my vision board, I'm like, okay, I've done this, I've done this. What else do I need to do? And we're going to try and do that again this year. And Ms. Dr. Adeji Olubameji, she's actually one of the 100 most powerful women in Canada. And of course, everybody knows barbarity. And we had, you know, business, we talked about business planning, especially because during COVID, we realized that most of our businesses were not properly structured. So all these things that I'm showing you are actually on our YouTube channel. And of course, these are pictures of some of the school supplies that we gave out. So so far in 2021, what have we done? So we did the Black History Month Celebration and Essay Writing Competition. We gave our bursary to our three winners. And our three winners, all three of them wants to go into the medical field. And guess what? We were able not only to give them bursary, we were able to match them with medical doctors to mentor them for one year. Because remember, our youth are our future. What are we doing to help them? It's so important for them to see role models in the community so that they will say, wow, if they're doing it, I can do it too. And let's not forget, yes, our parents are amazing, but I'm sure we all did it. I mean, most people don't listen to their parents. But when they see other people that look like their parents, it helps to make them want to be better. We started, I made an addition of our leadership series. I would highly recommend that everybody listen to that. The lady that came, she is simply phenomenal. In spite of everything, she's still where she is today. So really, nobody has, I mean, you don't have a choice but to be the best you can. And especially the crop of people coming to Canada. Nigerians are highly educated. We can do anything. The only person that can stop us is us. And of course, we're in the process of starting our mentoring program in May. Some of the programs that we plan to do is leadership series, newcomer series. We want to start CNP language schools. School, we've been thinking about spring break program and socio-economic professional programs and workshops and of course mentoring. So that is where we are today. Now, we want to hear from you. I'm just going to pass it back to Patience. Nobody has introduced Patience, so I'll use this opportunity to actually introduce Patience. So Patience Yase is a director with CNP. She works with TD Canada Trust. She's an assistant branch manager. She is simply an amazing woman, passionate. And she's so focused in building a community. And her time is, you know, she gives her time without asking for anything in return. And another thing that she did was to actually start Nigerian community in TD. She put all the Nigerians together because they were facing a lot of stress. And again, to the point that I mentioned before, we need to support ourselves, mentor ourselves, help ourselves to build up. And so I'll pass it back to Patience. Thank you so much for moderating this event. Really, really appreciate your support.
Wow. Thank you. Who's Patience? Who are you talking about? Thank you so much, Adeji Sola. Thank you. And just to add some butter to what she said regarding what CNP has done so far, it's been, it's been great. And the February event for the Black History Month was so powerful that we have three promising youth that today have a one-on-one with a fully medical doctor here in Canada, who is beautifully also Nigerian. So it's such a, it's, 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 it does nothing like a picture of you letting a child see who looks like them that they could become. So I will say thank you so much for making that happen, Council of CNP. Now the floor is open for what we are actually here for. We are here today, like we all know, to brainstorm, to talk to ourselves and ask ourselves, what can we do to move from here to here? How can we come together to make that happen? Under the umbrella of the Council of Nigerian Professionals. At this juncture, I'll say the floor is open. If you have a question, kindly use the raise hand facility or you can tap your question in the chat section and we'll give you the grounds to speak. Hi, Patience. Anybody's hand raised up?
Hi, Patience.
Hi, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah, when Mrs. Adeji Sola was talking about some of the activities that we have, she talked about the CNP Language School. And when I heard that, that's a good thing. And the reason is because some of the things that I hear, especially from employers or maybe the fear of, you know, Canadian employer is of neo-immigrants, is they worry, maybe they will have language barrier or things like that. So my question is, the CNP Language School, is it going to be for youth? Or is it going to help new immigrants, like adults that want to, you know, they have, you know, maybe language challenges or how is that? Maybe we can expansion a little bit about that. Thank you.
Okay. So Adeji Sola, do you want to throw light on that?
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mike, for that question. The Language School is actually going to be for everyone. We are, it's important for us to understand and make sure we retain, is retain a good word, culture. And a lot of us understand our languages. A lot of our children do not understand our languages. And the languages I'm talking about are Yoruba and Igbo. But everybody, because we know that Canada is a country of, is a bilingual country, English and French. French, for anybody that knows it, is value-added, whether you're youth or you're adult or you're newcomer, you're existing professional in the country. So the plan is to have Yoruba, people, French. Another language that we feel may add value to a lot of us is Spanish. And the fifth one, which is going to be quite interesting, is actually Mandarin. So the point is, there was a recent news, I think it was yesterday or the day before, where the government said we wanted to stay in Canada. We mentioned a lot of professionals that they want to stay. But also they gave a special number to people that can speak French. And just so you know, if you're working with the government of Canada, if you understand French, they actually say you better. So whether we're building up our children or building up ourselves, the fact that we can actually communicate in other languages is value-added. And of course, while we're doing all these language schools, if we have new immigrants that wants to learn anything about, you know, the way things are done in Canada, that's why we're doing the mentoring. Because Nigerians, we speak English. Nobody needs to teach us English. We just need to know how to maintain that temple so that we're not labeled. We've heard the Angry Black Movement, right? I mean, we leave our country, you know, with high hopes only to get here. And we realize that we're given different names. And on top of that, we're exhausted too. So how do we, you know, settle into the country, understand the culture? That is going to be taken care of with mentoring. When it comes to Language School, like I said, it's for youth, it's for children, it's for adults, for newcomers, it's for existing professionals. I hope that answered the question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike, and thank you, Adeji Sola, for throwing light on that. More questions, please? Even if it's not a question, something you want to know about, just let's make this as interactive as possible, please. Thank you.
There's a question in the chat.
Yeah, I see a question. It says, where will the language classes be held? If it's virtual, which platform? I can answer that. They are all going to be virtual and the platform is going to still be Google. If it's good, there's going to be a change, we'll definitely let everyone know.
Okay, maybe I kind of have the question. Like, do we have anything like a charity that we are, that we are funding apart from the community? Raising money, I've been raising money among ourselves. Do you have a particular, like a charity that we support? That we can be, we can be contributing to, like a monthly thing or something?
Okay, Adeji Sola, you want to take that, please?
Sure. We don't have a charity that we're contributing to. But we do volunteer in the community. Some of the things that we've done is we volunteer with Junior Achievement. What Junior Achievement does is they do financial literacy in schools from grade five to grade 12. And we used to go into schools. Now everything is virtual. So we do that. We also, we've also been to the Mississauga Food Bank. So when we're going to places like that, we've requested for people to bring in a can or two or even contribute. So it is when we have those events, it will be specific to those events, that's when we will contribute. Now, the one we did last year was during COVID when we gave 250 to 3 faith-based because we know that they always have people that need and they can, you know, make sure those funds or whether it's food that they're going to buy will can get to those people.
Okay, Ms. Olawumi, are you okay with the answer?
Yes, it's okay. Thank you.
But if you have ideas around what we can do, you know, that would be welcome, of course. If you have anything that you feel you can support, you just get into it and see how we can support it.
Okay.
On Patience, there are three new questions in the chat.
Okay, thank you, Manuel. Alex asks, could you please touch more on the Spring Break Program? The Spring Break Program, it's mainly, it's why it's termed Youth for the Youth. Youth meaning those between the ages of 12 to 35. But now we're trying to see how we can incorporate other age group. For now, we're looking at having a virtual game, game session where everybody comes just having fun, play game, while looking at having a session for the young kids, while we get an educator to come in and have a fun session while talking to them about maybe Canada, any topic that will fill, pick their interest. And thirdly, we're still looking for ideas, which is why we're here today. Whatever any of us think would need, we need to include to make the Spring Break Program a robust and something that we all enjoy, would more than the admin, that would more than happy to listen and implement. So actually, Spring Break Program is still in the making. We're still putting together packages to make it robust. Does anybody have any question regarding that? Anything to, okay. Now, Mike, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Patience. I also wanted to add that, you know, while we are asking questions, we should also be free because I think this is like a brainstorming session. And there is no idea that is not valuable. So if we have any, anything in mind that we think CNP should be doing, that they are not doing right now, or we think the things that, you know, the pain points that we think will benefit the huge, you know, the community, whether it is one or two or three, we should come up with those ideas. I think that's basically the objective of this session. You just see it as a brainstorming session. Any idea, there is no idea that is not valuable. So it could lead to something else. So that's, I just want to add that to the session. Thank you.
So Olawumi, raise your hand.
Yeah, for the Spring Program for the youths, I just had the suggestion in my mind, maybe musical, plenty of musical instruments for the youths. Can that be included?
Sure, definitely. We'll be taking that away. That, that sounds great. And actually, all this sounds, I see the picture in my head already. We'll definitely take that away. Thank you so much. I, the chat, I see a couple of questions in there. I'm just going to run through one or two. One by Kayla says, will there be a Google Classroom set up to make the language classes more of a classroom setting? Most likely, yes, because we want the language school, language learning to be as enjoyable and as fun as possible. So definitely a classroom setting. And again, that is still work in progress, was still designing it to be what the majority of us wants. So thank you for that suggestion. We'll take that away as well. Eluyinka asks, can you please highlight more on the support for Nigerian professionals that come into Canada looking for support in identifying steps from day one to placement slash business? I would give that to Adeji Sola to please throw more light on.
Can you please highlight more on the support for Nigerian professionals that came, that come into Canada looking for support in identifying steps from day one to placement or business? So one of the things I would say is this. In Canada, when you network, most of the time, 85% of the time, people are able to get jobs. 85% of the time. Now, Council of Nigerian Professionals has not promised to get people jobs. But what we have promised is we will introduce you to somebody that can refer you. We'll introduce you to somebody that can mentor you. Introduce you to somebody that can hold your hands and guide you. We've had instances of people looking at just one thing and wanting alone. And it can't just be one thing and wanting alone. In Canada, there are various skills that you can apply to various things. We know what our hard skills are. Our hard skills informs our soft skills. Our soft skills and hard skill informs our transferable skills. And people here can educate us that way. What can I use? Where can I transfer my skills? What can I do to transfer my skills? And by doing this, being able to open people's horizon to understand, you know, better the culture of Canada. And I know that there's a lot, you know, everything is in your face kind of where you get to Canada. Is it the banking system? I've had people tell me how they struggle to even order at Subway. You know, all those little, little things, even understanding what wrapped up, what it's all about. So if you, and this is where the mentor comes into play again, I'm going to go back to the mentor. When you have a mentor, the mentor goes above and beyond, not just career, but understanding Canada. And of course, we have a lot of professionals, a lot of senior professionals in the community that we can literally, you know, get you engaged with that can approach you. And of course, all the programs that we have, like I said, we did something about business. So understanding business, the structure, in case that's where you want to go. So those are some of the things that we do. I feel that mentoring and networking is something that would actually take us to the next level. And if there's anybody else that I, I want to add to that, because we have a lot of people that have been in the country. I mean, what has, what, what has your experience? How do you feel? Um, I mean, what else do you feel we can do to support?
Yeah, I'd like to echo, uh, what, uh, Ms. Adigisola said. There are so many excellent professionals in the CMP that they have a vast area of experience in different, uh, arms of business, IT, things like that. So that's why it's important to identify with one of the directors and they can link, you know, you up with somebody that they think is the best fit. Um, and bringing that to one of the events we are trying to put together is, uh, the mentoring session. We have a mentor and mentee session that we're trying to put together. So we, we have lots of responses, uh, whi- which is a good thing. And we're trying to put that together to see how we can match mentors with mentees and see how they can, um, help them. And this is like, I think this is the second time we're doing that. And hopefully, this will be a success and that will carry it along, you know, as, as we get better in that process. Um, you know, many people can, as, you know, mentors, ma- mentor, mentees, the mentees become mentors and becomes a cycle. And that's what we're trying to, uh, organically grow in the community. And that way, to be easy for us to just, um, identify somebody. And, you know, as Ms. Adigisola said, if, you know, in the course of the events that we're doing, if you identify somebody, maybe by them speaking or giving a presentation, um, you see that this is a person that I would like to connect with. Go ahead and, you know, find out their information, uh, from any of the executives and they can link you up. We, it doesn't have to be a formal thing. So don't wait until, oh, I'm waiting for the next mentoring session. Don't wait, just jump on board, don't be shy, just go for it. You know, so many people who have come across, I don't even know them, you know, through LinkedIn, they just reach out and I help them. So how much more people that I know that we share something in common, you know, so, and I'm sure so many of the people do that. So, um, that's basically what I'm going to share. Yeah, so I think Mr. Samuel wanna add something to it.
Yeah, sorry, before Samuel, sorry, just a second. Before you go ahead, I will need to introduce, um, Dr. Mike Mewa. He's actually one of the directors of Council of Nigerian Professionals as well. And he, most of, some of the questions will be channeled to him. He, Dr. Mike is a solution provider and an idea generator. He's an experienced civil, environmental and chemical engineering professional. So please feel free, he will be doing some of the talking too. I just wanted us to know why he's talking so much. Thank you. So, um, Samuel Shaibu, your hand is raised. Can you please have the floor?
Thank you, patients. Uh, thank you for this, uh, opportunity. I just happened to have stumbled on this link. I'm not sure, am, am I getting feedback or is it?
No.
Okay, okay. So I happened to have stumbled on this link and I was, um, pretty excited for the, for this, um, session. And the reason being, I tried, I stumbled on the Council of Nigerian Professionals a couple of years ago when I arrived in the country. And I tried to reach out and for some reason, I don't know, maybe, I don't, I don't know, but I never really got any, I wasn't able to get in contact with anyone or get any, um, sort of responses. So I'm, I'm wondering, is this, is it that you, the, 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 um, you've been having meetings outside of, you know, what we know? Is it that you're trying to revive the, the, uh, the council? That's my first question. So if you'd want to help me address that first.
Your meal, patients.
Yeah, thank you. I'll channel that question directly to the president.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shaibu. Thank you for the question. Uh, this is, this is my revival at all. Um, it's been around for almost three years now. And we've been doing what we know how to do best, providing information. Um, I don't know when you joined, but, uh, we talked about what we've done so far. Last year, we had twenty-five events, virtually. Yes, and, uh, and I sincerely apologize. I don't know how you will reach out and nobody will connect with you. So, so sorry for that. Uh, but, uh, if you look at the chat, you will see all our links, our Telegram link, our website, YouTube, all our social media, everything is there. But, and if you don't mind, just type in your email. I promise you, somebody will get in touch with you to, um, you know, provide additional information for you. You're on mute, sir. Mr. Shaibu.
Thank you, thank you for that. I'll, I'll most definitely, um, put that in. Thank you very much.
And you said you had one more question?
Okay, so the reason why I was reaching out was because I wanted to volunteer, um, as a mentor at the, at the time. And, um, I, I just felt, um, I don't know, for some reason, I just didn't get the, um, so I thought maybe it was an old advertisement I saw, maybe it was, I just don't know, but for some reason, um, that was what I wanted to do and, um, I couldn't, I didn't get any response. So I felt maybe it was, it was not an active council at the time and I went off to doing something, some other things.
Okay, so, okay, can I quickly say one thing, patients? So I, so since, uh, Mrs. Sha, did you see the new, um, Google link that we sent out for mentors and mentees?
No.
No, okay.
I just happened to have stumbled on this one.
Okay, if you can drop your email address, I can forward you that link and they can fill the form so that we can, you know, match you with, uh, with a mentee. And thank you for, for, you know, showing interest in volunteering. We really appreciate it.
Um, before we move on from this topic, there's another question in the chat in regards to the mentor-mentee relationship. So, patients, if you could, please just read it out.
So the question is from Nate, Alex Nathan. He says, are we still able to apply to be a mentor or a mentee? Mike, wanna take that, please? Thank you.
Yes, yes. So the same answer that I gave to Mr. Samuel is the same thing I'm gonna give. Uh, if Alex can just type his email in the chat, we will, uh, withdraw that and then send them, uh, the link where they can fill in the form. I believe the link is still active, but just to be safe, we'll still send you the link anyways. And then you can fill it. And thank you, thank you for volunteering to be a mentor.
Wow, thank you so much. It's, 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 it's really overwhelming when people are actually volunteering their time. It's, 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 we, we, we are, we are actually appreciative. Thank you so, so much. Uh, we have a question on the chat. I'm just gonna take before I go over to other, you raised hands. Because I, I see a few hands raised up. The question is from Alouw Atulsin, Praise For World Way. I wanna, thanks for the platform. I wanna know what plan CMP has for welcoming international students? Is there a mentoring platform for supporting them and helping them get settled in as well as that roles? In as well as what role does CMP plan to play in helping mature international students get into the workforce after their study? I would want Mike to take that question, please. Thank you.
Can I, let me, can I read that question? Can you read the question again? Is it on the chat?
Yeah, it's on the chat. I wanna know what plan CMP has for welcoming international students? Is there a mentoring platform for supporting them and helping them get settled in as well as what role does CMP plan to play in helping mature international students get into the workforce after their study?
Oh, good. Uh, so there are so many matured international students. I'm getting the feedback for some reason. Okay, so there are so many matured international students that, that are, um, members of CMP. Uh, and, you know, yeah, it's interesting that the, the, everybody has different journey, different pathways to whatever they want to do. Um, some people have a reason why they actually come, you know, to Canada as a mature student. And, you know, I'll give you an example. Some people come in just because that's an easy path to be a permanent resident. And there's nothing wrong with that. Um, so at the end of the day, they might not really wanna go into that field of whatever they try to study in. So what I'm saying in essence is that if you, or whoever the person is, try to, if you can try to connect with somebody, um, if you can connect with me, then I can link you up with one or two international students that are matured international students that have gone through this path. And they can tell you, okay, these are the challenges that I've faced, um, while I'm doing my program. Or these are the scholarships that you can apply to, because as an international student, I was a student, there are tons of scholarships out there that you can apply to. So you wanna take advantage of all that to make sure that you get in as much as you can get as a student, because the moment you finish, all this money won't come in. Um, so, uh, and, you know, I think that's basically how I will handle that. You're trying to reach out to me or, and I can link you up with, uh, one or two people that I think they have experienced that area. And now coming to, uh, transitioning from being a student to, uh, you know, whatever career that you're trying to get into, um, there are different ways you can do that. Uh, number one is you can look, look at your professor, you know, if you're an international, I'm assuming that the person is doing a master's program or a PhD program as a senior student. And you can look at your professor and, you know, talk to them. Usually, they have contacts within their contacts. They can link you up to, uh, you know, to do either, um, a part-time position with, uh, whether if you have a partnership with the industry based on the project you're working on. So that's one part. The other part is conferences, right? Uh, conferences, you know, they, that's the easiest way, you know, for an international student that are, you know, that is in the master's or PhD program to get into the workforce. Conferences is just, uh, is the way to go, because, uh, if you, most of the positions that are out there online, by the time you apply to them, you're still, you're overqualified or your application is just getting buried somehow. So what conferences does is that you get to meet people, you get to meet the decision makers of the company. And you can show them what you can do, tell them what are the expertise that you bring into the company and they can, um, you know, bring you in. Uh, so many people that I know that they, through conferences, they don't even send an application out. They go for interview the following day and then they start to work. You know, so because, yeah, you know, skill-heavy, those people that are PhDs, they are skill-heavy. Getting job through online is not, doesn't really work for most people. Um, in, in base of my experience, I've not even seen anybody that I get, you know, got a job online through having a PhD. Most of them are, are either through conference or through their professor. So, uh, I, I wouldn't wanna take too much of the time, uh, because there are other questions coming in. Um, so if you can send in your questions or contacts, then we can talk a little bit more offline. Thank you.
If I may just quickly add to that, everything that Mike said just now, just talked about networking, you have to network, you have to get away from your comfort zone. You have to learn to be uncomfortable, you know, to understand what's happening in the industry, because really, after the schooling, what do you want? You need a job. So you need to network, you need to get mentoring. Now, even though we talk about having a mentorship starting in May, once that starts, there will be anything else at that time, but that does not mean we cannot match you with somebody that can mentor you. So please reach out. Again, look at the chat, the emails are there, everything you need to, uh, connect with us is on the chat. And I understand that the mentoring, uh, link has been posted also. Please copy it. If you wanna be a mentor, please fill it out. If you want to be a mentee, please fill it out. You need, in this Canada, because it's new to us, we need to hold each other's hands. So whether you're a mature student or, uh, just an international student, I mean, we will get someone to support you one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for that. Like, uh, adding to what Mike and Adigisola said, mentor, we all, at some point, everybody's a mentee, becomes a mentee. You could, I could mentor you and of course, people meant, somebody else will mentor me, because we are always, if we're always aspiring to get as high as we want to, at some point, we all, all be a mentee or a mentor. So I'll say, thank you, let's hold each other's hand and go together. They say, if you wanna, if, if, if you wanna, uh, if you wanna move, go alone. But if you wanna go far and achieve something, we all go together. And this is the main reason why we're all here today. Do we have any more questions on the chat? Okay, I see a question now. Uh, thank you. At some point, Adebah said the, the volume was, was low. I think it's fixed now. She says it's, it's okay. Adebah, can you hear us now? Okay, um, we have, Emmanuel is behind the scene. He's in charge of the, the, the volume. He's in charge of logistics. I wanted to quickly introduce him. Emmanuel Okarapore is Honors, is a Honors graduate with a double major in law and justice and political science. He's in the process of writing his LSAT to gain admission to law school. He's an entrepreneur and he volunteers with various NGOs. He's a digital team member with CMP. And I can assure you, you will see his face soon, very soon. Um, we have another question from Kinsley. Kinsley says, I'm a new immigrant, less than three weeks in Canada. I have a fifteen-year tanker shipping logistics experience from Nigeria and need a mentor, please. I don't think that's a question, but he has dropped off his, um, his, uh, email address and certainly, somebody will get in touch with him. So Kinsley, uh, check your emails very soon or your phone, somebody will give you a call or get in touch with you, okay?
On patients, a few hands were raised.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm gonna get the hands now. Okay, I, I, I have just one. Um, Elu Yinka Awoyelu. Yeah, you have the floor, please.
Okay, uh, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the invite. I have a couple of recommendations that I would like to consider. Um, will it be possible for CMP to take two, maybe three, uh, professions and have a strong presence in such profession, such that you can almost predict a successful outcome? And by this, an example, we have a lot of great, uh, financial advisors in the team. Probably that is an area where if you are interested in following that pathway and you get into CMP today, you're almost sure of making a headway. And I choose my words carefully. I have not said I want to make, um, Lady Atiba out of anybody or make, uh, patients out of anybody. But, uh, with your experiences and your knowledge, you are able to pull somebody from ground zero, basically, to start. And I use financial advice or financial analysis in loose terms. I have no knowledge of anything financial. It could also be project management, because I see David Odigue there, who is an expert in the project management space. There could be nothing and I will stop at that. So that is one that I would like for you to consider. The second one, I have limited time and I need to leave at about six o'clock, I apologize. Um, is that in selecting mentors, because when I went through that form, I am not qualified. I failed it though. Is, I will expect, uh, directors or the folks in charge to have a deep dive on mentors that are real mentors and have experience mentoring before you kick somebody like us out. Thank you and have a good evening.
Wow, thank you so much for those questions. I would humbly direct them to Ms. Adigisola.
I was actually thinking you'd write them to Mike, because he's the mentoring person.
Okay, so Mike, you have been voluntold. Kindly take over.
Yeah, no worries. Um, so on the, on the mentorship part, I'm thinking, so you said you were not qualified. You're not qualified based on experience? That, is that the reason why you said you're not qualified? Or you're not qualified because you're new in Canada? Or I just want some clarification on that aspect. Thank you.
It's, it's both.
Both. Oh, I see, I see. Um.
Well, well, it's one, that's experience in Canada.
I see.
I've put in over thirty years of work in that. I have put in over 30 years of work in an international organization, actually run a mentor program for an organization. You use your experience in Canada, my application will be thrown out.
Okay, I, I understand where you're coming from. And, you know, yeah, maybe, maybe the form needs to, we need to a little bit cast it a little bit wider. But maybe, you know, look at it from this angle. Whoever we're trying to match, whatever they're going to be doing, they're going to be doing it in Canada. So the perspective we're bringing in is how can this person flourish in whatever profession or whatever thing they are trying to accomplish in Canada? And what we're trying to do is somebody has done that thing before in this same environment, right? So because the environment is important and that's why we see, we see that, you know, Canadian experience as, as a value. And not only that, you know, if you look at most of the jobs that are in Canada, you know, Canadian experience has always been one of the Achilles' heel of new immigrants. Because they will tell you, well, yes, you have 30 years of experience where you're coming from, but you don't have Canadian experience. So we won't give it to you. You know, so how, how do we present ourselves such a way that we don't screen ourselves out? Although we have, we know the work, but because nobody has seen us do the work in this environment, they, you know, they won't believe you that you have done the work, you know. And so those are the, the things that we are, you know, we have those constraints in there that it's, it's important for whoever is going to be a mentor to have that Canadian experience and to have gone through some of the hurdles that, you know, somebody that, that is new will, will have to pass through. And they will tell them, okay, you know, these are the things you have to pass through, you can't shake it. But if you want to get through these hoops, you know, this, this, you know, I'll give you, you know, instances or tricks that you can use. Maybe, you know, tweak your resume this way and don't present this or present it in this format. And, you know, and then that will get you through some hoops. So that's basically the reason. So I'm, I'm sorry that you were cut off, but that's the goal for that particular set of mentorship session. The second thing you mentioned, what was it?
Can I just quickly touch on that? Everybody knows that there's always an exception to the rule, right? So some people definitely were qualified based on experience in Canada. But some people need not just experience in Canada, but also experience in other things because when we look at the form, it talks about what are your personal experience, whatever, I mean, what are your personal interests and your professional interests? So maybe if the personal or professional interest matches somebody that has not worked in Canada, that would be a time that we can use somebody like Mr. Awiel. But again, we, we need to go deeper because again, we need, we need a robust and holistic experience to be able to live in Canada anyway. And regarding the finance, project management and nothing that you mentioned, we will take it away and get back to the problem together. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a raised hand, Idosa Adams.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for CMP, for having this platform. I say this because the Law Society of Canada had a mentor, mentor and mentee program years ago and I signed up for it as, as a lawyer, as a new lawyer at the time. And I met my mentor of maybe 20 years plus now, Nimala, she's not a Nigerian, but we, we clicked the first time we met and we've been friends and, you know, like I said, mentors to, to tomorrow. So what CMP is actually doing is creating a platform where you have deep connections and roots, not just professionally, but also in any other area of life. And I applaud them for that because it is so fundamental that when you come to this country as, as an immigrant or I'm sorry, I don't like the word immigrant. When you move into this country, because everyone in this country is, is an immigrant, every single person, unless you're an Indian born in this land, otherwise your second or third generation is an immigrant. So I don't like to use the word immigrant, I'm sorry. So like I said, I was saying, so when you, when you move here, you definitely need, I know I just, I just want to talk about transferable skills, which I guess Mr. Woyeli, Woyeloo may have in terms of transplant, but the mentorship part is so critical because you find that there's so much that you may not know that somebody can support you with. I can use myself as an example, being, being a lawyer and coming from a different jurisdiction to Canada. You know, there's so much that you need to learn and also need to connect with people. But the most important thing and the reason why I want to contribute towards this platform is I know CMP is doing a great job. But mentorship can go beyond the platform that you're in. And what I mean by that is for those who really, maybe you need a mentor, you are a postgraduate student and you're wondering, okay, how? And CMP may not have the right fit for you. Go to LinkedIn, like someone mentioned, and then introduce yourself. That's how Canada is so liberal. And tell the person, I just saw your profile, I'm looking for a mentor, be professional. They don't answer you, they're very busy, try again. They don't answer you, keep trying and look for somebody else. The point is, I have met people and I've mentored people that I didn't need to know their, them personally. And so this is a great platform that this is happening because I know you use the Law Society, which is a, a much bigger institution. Recognize the importance of mentoring, recognize the importance of having people that can direct you, people that can refer you. Because mentoring is also a referral. Because your mentor will refer you to organizations or people that may be able to get you the right job that you're looking for, for on your own. So I want to applaud CMP for the great work you're doing. It takes a lot to come and put this together and I'm, and I signed up the mentor form because I do know how critical and is important to, to mentor and obviously to be legal because my background is in law. And so I'm prepared to support any student as long as that person is also serious. Because it's one thing to have a mentor and then you think the person will just, you know, feed you everything. No, you have to do the work and you have to be ready to work. Thank you so much and, and I think that's part of my contribution towards this conversation. It's a great one. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so, so much, Idosa. You, you, you actually threw more light and you said something that I liked. You said you should be ready to do the work, which is really true. Because men, men, mentor mentees like somebody holding your hand. But nobody's going to hold your hand and open the door. You also have to use other hands to open the door. So thank you so very much for, for, for throwing more light on that. We have one question again in the chat. It says from Oluwashen. Is it possible to also have special interest group? I.e. cells on the CMP to facilitate mentorship in lines of discussion? E.g. medical, agric, sales, entrepreneurship, financial services, legal, etc. Where these, where this interest group can act as pillar of support to one another, most especially new immigrants in those line? They could also make presentations to educate everyone. I believe that should be directed to Mike, please.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. You know, I, you know, I, I'm all for, you know, the more, you know, help we can render to each other, the stronger this community will be. So right now, that, the dimension mentorship that we are putting together, it's not structured that way. But I think I like this idea and I'm, you know, I think we should work with, I, I can't remember the name of the person that suggests this now. If, if, you know, the person can work with me, you know, to kind of fine tune. The idea is that I think I understand what he or she is trying to say, you know, have like a core group of people that we can, you know, easily, you know, bring in mentors and mentees and try and match them. I, and I, I like, I like that. That's a very smart idea. So I will take that away and I appreciate if that person can reach out to me and, you know, work together. You know, because this is still our own community, right? We work together and say, okay, maybe these are the things we should be looking at, you know, do it this way, this is what will, will, you know, work better. So, yeah, do you have the name of the person?
Yeah, it was from Oluwashen.
Oluwashen, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if Oluwashen can, can reach out to me or, you know, drop their email address here, I can reach out to them and then we can brainstorm offline. Thank you.
Thank you. I love this. This is, this is not, not talking, doing, walking the talk. So thank you, Mike, for that.
Our patient has been handled. Yes, there's a hand raised.
Okay, thank you. I have Peter. Peter, you have the floor. Peter, are you there? Okay, while we wait for Peter, Oluwatosin, praise for her, she says, Mike, I'll be happy to work with you as well. And she, he or she put down their email address. Thank you so, so much for volunteering already, Oluwatosin. That is really appreciated. Peter, are you there now?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm okay. I think the initiative is laudable. But when I went through the notice of the meeting, you were requesting for suggestions on what should be done to strengthen the association. And we have to approach it from two perspectives. From the perspective of those we're trying to further their interests and the council itself. Wanting, we should be able to know exactly what the people want, the immigrants. And we should be able to also know their fears. And those who want to assist also, we should be able to know their fears. Because we that are new to Canada, I believe it affects other people. There are things they are hearing about Nigerians here. And one of them is that they don't cooperate with each other, just like the Indians will cooperate among themselves. But I believe with closer interaction and constant meeting, those fears, worries will be minimized and we'll be in a vantage position towards furthering their interests. I believe to get something very positive in that regard, we should be able to have a focus group discussion, may not be a larger group, for us to dwell on some initial hypotheses. And that will form part of our working document. So I think that's my little contribution for now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for that. We'll definitely, we'll, we'll definitely incorporating that in our, in our, in our activities. So from, if we hear you correctly, you said focus on two perspectives, from the community and organization. Also know what immigrant wants, what mentors want and their fears.
Yes.
Okay. That, 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 that's kind of broad. What immigrant, what, what mentors want and their fear. I think I like that. Do we, do we want to discuss that? Do you, do you want to talk about that? Adjit Sola, do you want to throw light on that, please?
Let me quickly say one thing before Mr. Adjit Sola. So Peter, that's, you, you've raised excellent points there. So one of the reasons why we are having this is to, you know, to talk about all those issues that, you know, we think are pain points that we think, you know, CMP can, can take up. But remember that CMP is not, you know, there are some things that CMP can't do, you know, because CMP is still nascent, right? Still trying to find its feet, but while we're doing all that, there are so many other things that we have done. Some of the things that Mr. Adjit Sola mentioned, we talked about financial literacy, we talked about entrepreneurship. Those are workshops that, that we've done. You know, I think we've done one last year, we did another one the year before. We've done, you know, financial information. So we have, you know, an itinerary of events that we have put together and that we will be doing this year. And, you know, next week, we have another event coming up, the week after we have another event, May, we have another event. So if you just, you know, keep, keep your eyes open, keep your ears open, you know, there will be all these suggestions, we are taking them to heart and we'll try and incorporate all these suggestions into the strategic plan of CMP. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Adjit Sola.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Omwadeje, for all the questions and the contribution and to Mike. I just want to say that as a new professional who's in Canada, my journey is a very, very difficult. And I need a different one. And that's why it's important for us to hear a lot of the community what they feel is a pain point, like you said. When I came to Canada, my pain point was the fact that there was no commission, nothing, nada. Nobody was there to talk to me. I, I didn't know where to go, you know, and people told me there was no job. I needed to go on. And if I wasn't interested in going on welfare, I should go and become a PSW. Before coming to Canada, I had 15 years of banking experience. I don't like blood and I'm not the type that I, I don't, I don't like taking, I like, I like giving. That's who I am. So I didn't have, now, now. And so this is based on my perspective and based on a lot of professionals' perspective that went through that same thing. I know of someone that was told, oh, do insurance, do the insurance certification, oh, do banking, do banking certification. At the end of the day, it's not using either. So how do you know what to focus on? How do you know what you need as a mature student, as an international student, as a new professional immigrant in Canada? How do you know what you need? Information, information, information. Again, I would, I know that we're, we're, we're coming up with a lot of ideas which we're going to take away, but we've done a lot. You want to go into those YouTube channel and look at what we've done. If you're new to Canada, there's information in that YouTube channel that we cannot continue, we can't regurgitate, regurgitate right now. So please invest time in looking at those events that we've had. And yes, we'll continue to do it because we know that we, we need to continue to educate ourselves. Now, a lot of people always say how the Indians are doing, how the Chinese are doing, believe you me, they've been here for decades. They've been here and they know the system. We need to know the system. We have not been here as long as they've been here. It will take time. But the point is, since Rome was not built in a day, since the journey of a thousand miles begins with one step, we're taking that step. And if we take it together, we will be better for it. I'm just going to stop there.
Wow, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. I'll quickly, I think team's hand has been raised for so long. I don't want his hand to hurt him. So I'm going to call on team to please speak. Team, you have the floor. Thank you. Hi, team, are you there?
While we're waiting on team, there is a question by Mr. Samuel Shabu about where to find the details for all events.
So Mike, you want to take that? Where do you find details of all these events?
So Emmanuel, if you can post the, the information on how to join the Telegram. I'm not sure if Mr. Samuel is on the Telegram. So we have a Telegram platform that we post events and post jobs and post advertisements. So if you're on that Telegram platform, you will have access to all the events that is coming up. And we also have, so if you fill the membership form, you have access to the newsletters. We send, send out newsletters every month, sometimes twice, depending on how, how much information we want to share. So we send out newsletters. So those newsletters, you will get it if you provide your information on, on the membership form. Emmanuel, if you can also send the membership form so that Mr. Shabu can fill it, then you will have access to all this information we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for that, for that information. Do we have any hands raised? No. Okay, see, if, if you kindly check the chat group, that there, there are more informations gonna be, um, it's gonna be published on there as well.
I have a question.
I'll just give the answer.
The community, the community's one.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead.
For the community. So, uh, before the meeting started, I was actually asking patients and Mike, what we feel is the issue, the issue that we feel we have in our community. And so for, for newcomers, for people that are new, if you're less than five years, we call people that are less than five years newcomers. What would you say are the challenges you're facing? I said mine was lack of information. So what would you say, based on your experience so far, the challenges that you're facing, that you would want us to focus on?
Anybody can take the floor, please?
Thank you. This is Sam once again. I, I think information is very critical, just as you've mentioned. Um, when I arrived in twenty sixteen, um, I practically didn't know anybody in the country. And, um, I ended up staying with the family that were gracious enough to have taken me in. Um, and I stayed with them for three months. And a lot of my decisions were actually were based on, let me turn on my camera. A lot of my decisions were based or informed by, um, by them. Um, I know they meant it for good, but they were working based on their own awareness, level of awareness at the time as well. And, um, so I'll say information is very critical. Um, I host a podcast and haven't spoken with, um, some professionals. Besides information, they've also mentioned our mindset, which I totally agree, agree with. Um, because I know consciously or unconsciously, the level of our results, um, we, we would, we'd basically view our result based on, I mean, sorry, we'll view our potential based on the results that we have. But you see, if we're able to increase the awareness of that individual, that the, the results they're achieving will change. So information plays a great role, a very huge, um, role when it comes to how far and how well we, we do in our, our Canadian journey. So I totally agree with you on, on that. Thank you.
Um, just to add on what you said about information, the fact that during the sort of the pandemic, um, we and CMP were able to help multiple people about the, the, what the government was able to provide for each person. As well as the information is even still available on our website. The minute you go to websites, there's a link to the COVID, COVID section where you can find out what the government is doing for people in your situation, whether you're unemployed, whether you are an entrepreneur with your own business, right? Whether you're a graduate and you need to pay your loans, right? There are lots of opportunities that are available, just finding the right avenues to them. That is all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Manu. And thank you, Mr. Shabu. I love the fact that you mentioned mindset. You know, the, the, the way we do things back home is so different from the way things are done in Canada. So if we don't have the right mindset, we call it open mindset. We call it, you know, not having a fixed mindset. We call it being agile, you know, we, we, we call it being flexible, you know, being able, you know, talking about transferable skills, you know, it's not just, oh, my way or the, or the highway, you know, being able to adapt, you know. And one of the things that Mike mentioned was the fact that, and this is not me being sexist or anything, that women tend to adapt better than men, uh, because they have that, I don't know, whether it's motherly, I don't know. People tell me I don't have motherly, but maybe they have that motherly, uh, behavior that wants them to just go above and beyond for their family. So I love the mindset. It's something that really needs to be focused on. We can't continue to do the same thing, the same way and expect different result. And we can't bring the mentality of Nigeria into Canada. And so, yes, the people you meet matter. You now going above and beyond and trying to connect with communities or professionals would actually help you to be better. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. From what I heard, mindset is very critical, like, 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 like I just said. Uh, mindset needs to be very fluid to be able to, to, and be ready to adapt to whatever changes comes, uh, away. We have a Dosa's hand raised up. Do you want to take the floor, please?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I'm not a member of CMP, but I think I'm part of the conversation and I'm part of the community as well.
But, but sorry, ma'am, before you continue. Sorry, Mr. Dosa, the fact that you're Nigerian, you are a member.
Uh, no problem. In proxy. So, um, so I thank, the, the conversation, the question that I did just, uh, raised was, uh, what are your challenges as a newcomer? And I think if you, I like the word newcomer and immigrant, that's a better word. Um, so if you're a newcomer to Canada, um, what do you experience? Of course, the cold weather for me, I have to speak of my experience number one. But then, I think one very critical thing that we need to know when you come into Canada is volunteerism. Um, the first time I came to Canada, I started volunteering. I didn't have that experience from Nigeria, but uh, you know, you know, it was a good experience for me because it opened a lot of things. And volunteering, I mean, I mean, what I mean by volunteering, I don't mean volunteering based on, uh, your profession or your skills. Uh, I volunteered for a telecare distress line, um, for a long time. And my role was just to listen, listen to people, people talk about their problems and refer them to community services. And I did that for so long. But in that skill, what I learned from that skill, I still use to today. Number one. Number two, what I, what the, the contact I made from that skill in terms of the directors of, because I had no clue what volunteerism was. I didn't come from a culture of volunteer, volunteering. But over time, you learn that the, we talked about networking and mentors. You now meet people that become lifetime, um, um, mentors or, uh, networking that we need to network. So I think as a newcomer, we need to let go of our, maybe call it big manism, or we need to let go of maybe your, your, your status in, in wherever you come from. Maybe you were a director of several companies in different countries. Canada doesn't really care whether you were doing all that, but you need to humble yourself and just, you, it can just to be opening the door as for an organization. That is a skill you're learning, humility. So I think when you come in as a newcomer, you, the, the mindset ties down to that. Because if you don't have the mindset to learn new roles that maybe, um, you've never been exposed to, maybe you came from a privileged class in Nigeria. Or maybe you think, oh, that's putting myself down. What, what would this bring me in terms of value of money? You need to let go of that because that person in that company, that volunteer organization, who is a, um, president, might be the CEO of Starbucks, or might be the CEO of, of, um, whatever the organization is in Canada. And that person, knowing that, wait a minute, you are an engineer and you're doing this? Yes. Why? I wanna learn. Oh, my goodness. Can I see your CV? That is your ticket to your door. I mean, this country, we ask how this country works. They wanna see that you are able to do small things and then they would just, then because of that small thing, they now know your character and your personality. And then they're willing to open more doors to you. So I think volunteerism is something that, um, uh, was a, I won't say was a challenge to me because I got into it, but I didn't know the importance of it. Uh, and I'm glad I'm, I, I, I've been doing it. And I'm glad that this is part of what CMP is about as well. That's what I wanted to add to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Edosa. I just want to quickly answer a question that Oluwatose in praise for were put on the chat, which is really key. She said, the kind of information people give newcomers, we can't continue selling fear negatively to people. This breeds unhealthy competition and rivalry. And this is why you need to look out there to find professional organizations that you can be a part of. Um, everybody I know who have volunteers with CMP knows that the idea is to motivate. When people come, I was having a conversation yesterday with Edosa. Actually, we volunteer with another organization. We were talking with one of our MPs. And we're talking about the fact that when people come into Canada, they feel they are, they are landed, but eventually they realize they are grounded. They came with so much hopes, high hopes, great expectations of newcomers, only to learn that Canada deals with it in a different way. Your certificate, your experience, your skills, it's enough to bring you in, but it's not enough to get you an entry level job. Does that even make sense? Well, if you come to organizations like this, we're able to motivate you, empower you, show you that we've been there, done that, and you can do it too. So if you know anybody that is, you know, being in undated with unnecessary fear, let them come to CMP. We will support them. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have time for fear because we're gonna conquer. This land is our land, period. Thank you.
You're mute.
Can I speak?
Patience, you're mute.
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to add something to what I did just said. The, the, the Ontario, uh, plate, um, slogan says, Ontario, yours to discover, is actually Canada. Is yours to discover, yours. It's you now discovering. And discovering is by volunteering, is by networking. Because don't forget again, your network is your net worth. At this point, I'm gonna give you floor to team. Team, you have your hand raised up. Could you please throw in your question?
Uh, thank you very much. Sorry about the wrong time. My phone just started updating at the wrong time. Yeah, um, the question I have is what plans does CMP have for growing your influence within an organization? So what I mean is this. Um, it's one thing to come into Canada and get a good job and start earning the money. But, uh, I've realized over time that uh, getting the job is different from growing within the organization. And not just growing one step, two step higher, but growing into a place whereby you can influence decisions. Influence, okay, somebody is coming in to take this particular role. Can I bring in a Nigerian? Can I tell HR, I want to interview this person? So how do we grow to such capabilities within a, an, uh, an organization in Canada? And I think we also need programs to grow uh, people like that, people who have been here three years, four years, five years, been in the role, uh, working, being comfortable, but at the same time, now need people who can now influence decisions in the top hierarchy of an organization. That's, uh, my question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question, team. I would, I would, I would, I would want to, um, say, say something about that question, but maybe I did you let me want to throw in something else as well. I'll use my, my, my own experience as, as an example. When I came to Canada six years ago, I joined, um, TD. Before I joined TD, I made sure I, I did different exams to get certifications to get me in. So when I got in, prior to that, in Nigeria, I was an assistant, branch manager in Nigeria, before I came here. But when I came, people kept telling me, oh, patience, getting to the banking here, it's, it's way out of the question. Why don't I just go to McDonald's, do something? I was like, nope. Banking is, I was always something I was always wanting to do, and I will still do it. So I got in. But I could only get in becoming a teller. So this was me in my early thirties, that time, having an eighteen year old, telling patients, go do recycling. Recycling is when you, you pick up all the papers on the floor and throw them in the trash, in the recycling bin. An eighteen year old, I'm like, okay, hi Joseph, I'll go do that, no problem. So, you know, so this was me, according to what Edosa had said, I ate bundles and bundles of humble pie. I call it humble pie. I ate so many humble pies and had to do what I needed to do. But I was very focused in a role where people spent, as a teller, spent two, three years. I spent nine months. Why? Because I let them, I let them know that, hey, yes, I'm doing teller, but I, I, I'm doing this job because I wanted to kick into the door. Now, to your question again, team, I, I did that role, went to the next role. When I needed to break into the managerial section of the bank, I, it was impossible. It's, I tried doing my research and somebody said, patience, you need, somebody up there has to have your name in their mouth. When they are behind closed doors, somebody in that room can, she'd be able to say, ah, I know patience, she can do that managerial role. And that was when I started networking. And this was barely three years ago. When I, I went on LinkedIn, and this is when I met a digitaler, we had names. I, I, I see the other work. I see what, I still wrote up my, my, my letters to them, my memos to them. Hey, my name is patience, I'm driven, I had my limited pitch. That's something else that, that we're gonna also work on as well. As if you want to grow in this part of the country, you have to have a limited pitch. That's something that you can tell for, in, for in thirty seconds about you, that will make the person listening say, oh, wow, really? So to your question again, team, at that point to break out, to get to that managerial executive, the only answer, two answers, um, sorry, networking and mentoring. Those, there's, there's, at that point, what you know, how good you are on the job, is not gonna take you further. It is now, not who you know, as we say in Africa, but it's rather who has your name in their mouth? What can they say about you? Oh, I know team, I, I, I volunteer with team. Oh, he was very, he had a very personable character. The moment he comes in the room, he takes over the room. Oh, team, if team is the guy, if you call him, he will always be there, he will always show up. That's all. So it's just that mentorship and volunteering is another lead into networking. So additional, I, I saw you nodding your head and I'm sure you want to throw more light on that.
I think Mike actually wants to talk, so I'll leave the floor for him.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think you hit the nail on the head, patience. Um, so, and I'm sure this applies to most of us here that are professionals. Uh, when we are there that we want to grow, you know, in, increasing whatever area that we are, uh, we are looking to, uh, to increase in. And this is the skill. And this is the secret. You have to give in more that is required, than is required of you. And what do I mean by that? You are not only doing your normal work, your seven, eight to four work, or whatever time you're doing. You are in committees, right? When they send out information, oh, we are, we, we're trying to put together a committee that will be looking into whatever you're doing, procurement or whatever it is. Say, sending your name. Oh, we're looking for people that will be volunteering or, um, you want to set up a, um, what's it called? We were planning to do a forum, right? For example, I'll use my own office, for example. Every year we do, um, public works forum for all our staffs. And, you know, and when they send out the email, if you're interested, you know, they're looking for people to come into public forum. And, you know, I put up my name, yeah, sure. And, you know, this is the third year I'm in that forum now. There's a lot of work that is involved, but it goes back to what patient said. The people that sit on that public, public work forum, the CEO sits on that forum. The commissioner of public works sit on that forum. The director of public works, um, of, uh, engineering sits on that forum. The associate directors of procurement, they sit on that same forum. So when they are discussing, who are we going to, we're looking for another, you know, associate director for this position. And don't you think when they start looking, they say, you know what, you know, what is Mike doing now? They are gonna probably recommend that person, right? So that is the secret. You know, um, people say businesses are not actually done in, in the offices. Most business deals, they are done at the dinner table. That's where our business deals are done. So it is in those unofficial settings that you want to, you know, establish yourself. And number one is show up. Just show up. You know, fine, it will demand your time, but just show up. Even though you are not really doing much, show up. So we're gonna meet, um, four o'clock, two to three, show up, right? I, you know, for me, I'm in like three different committees in my office. It's a lot of time. I have to put in overtime that I'm not being paid for. But what you're doing is that people are looking at you and say, you know what, this is a reliable person. We can trust this person. This person is in our own network. You know, that's basically what you're doing. You're just putting your face in there. When, you know, when somebody is seeing you all over the place, all over the place, when the opportunity comes, who, who do you think they're gonna call? They're gonna call you, right? And that's the way it is. You know, if the CEO decides to resign tomorrow and say, you know what, I'm looking for somebody that I know that I can hand over this thing to. Where do you think they're gonna look? They are gonna look into their own smaller caucus. They are not gonna look at, fine, people are still going to apply to it. They're still gonna post it online. Everybody will throw in their application thinking, oh, but they already know who is gonna get it. And that's where networking comes from. You know, net, you have to network. And that's where networking comes from, you know, net, you have to network, they already know how, that's the way Canada works, right? It's all about networking. You know, I mentioned before that you have to meet people, go to conferences, especially if you are top heavy. And what do I mean by top heavy? If you have a PhD, or if you are highly skilled, you have like thirty years of experience coming from whatever Abu Dhabi, Nigeria, UK. Networking is your skill. You can't be, you know, you know, you know, competing with people online with bachelors, you know, and putting your resume out there, nobody's gonna look at it, you know, and so, and that's the only way you can do it. I will tell you most of the job, all the jobs that I've done in Canada, that is known that I actually apply for. It's all about networking, just meet somebody and say, oh, okay, interview for that, okay, and that's, you get a job, boom. Right? So, and basically that's, that's how it is. And then the next one you do is you meet somebody from somewhere, oh, I'm looking for this person. And, oh yeah, you know, just interview for the person, because the person that is actually interviewing you, you guys, both of you, I'm launching like yesterday. So do you think he's not gonna give you the job? They're just doing interviews formally, right? So basically, I would, I would just leave it at that. Networking and volunteering is key. You know, you have to give more than is required of you, and if people see that you're giving more than is required of you, the reward will come.
Thank, thank you so much, Mike. So sorry, Emmanuel, who caused number, um, hand raised, do you mind just, uh, yes?
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't realize my hands was too raised, so I was actually just typing my stuff and sending it in. Yeah, so just to follow the line of information and mindset. I think someone shared, uh, to Sebastian that when he came into Canada, he lives with the family and kind of, his mindset was almost built on that information, and I think it happened to say, same thing happened with me as well. But I would say that the family I lived with, I think they had a very, very, very strong positive impact in how I work today. And so I would say that is true, the people you move, move with, when you come in as a first, as a newcomer, actually works a lot. They, that builds the foundation of your thoughts or mindset. Uh, but people do have problems of filtering this information, like uh, I think Shala mentioned. Uh, I came in as an architect, many years of, I think about fifteen years of being an architect in Asia and some other places. But coming here, I did my own research, it's not what I wanna do. That was my mindset, I changed it, went into I T. Meeting some other people coming in from Nigeria as architects, they wanna do the same thing. But because of, but the openness I have, I don't say being an architect coming from Nigeria to Canada is not possible, no. My mindset is, it is possible, I didn't go that route because my priorities changed. So, um, and this is the kind of uh, culture that most people don't have. They always wanna throw the negative news at you. Um, this is something, this is not something, a mindset or kind of something we can cover in this session, but I think my main question I was actually asking was, how do we increase traffic to the CMP website? Because that is very important, that is, um, I would say a source of truth for every CMP member. Um, they, I have been a member for, I don't know how months, how many months, but the WhatsApp is kind of the only place that gives me, that I connect and jump into these meetings. But I believe that increasing traffic to that website will help to um, facilitate more, um, more validated information in terms of uh, success stories of Nigerians that came in here. Um, these stories would definitely help change a lot of uh, people's mindset, kind of put the filter in there, the wrong, I mean, the right filter, where people can say, okay, uh, this other person said is not possible, and now on this website, this person is saying it's possible. Let me reach out to this person on this, uh, on this blog, let's put it that way, that is another thing, I mean, uh, the CMP website, we can have individuals that can um, kind of upload blogs, success stories and businesses and some of this. I think this is how we can build this community going forward. Um, someone was talking about, um, uh, uh, so uh, Nigerian saying, um, let me hire this person for this job and blah, 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 blah. Link, we, I definitely go to LinkedIn to find different uh, Nigerians that are successful, but let's say, how about, how do we link those success stories that are in LinkedIn into our CMP website or blogs? This would be a very, very way, a good way to build a very positive council of professionals. And then these testimonies being shared will kind of bring more people in, where we can even encourage our businesses and, and I believe that even the Indians, the Chinese that have been here for many years, that is how they, they've kind of actually built that foundation. It's not just talk, 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 but it's more like talk now do, as we call it in Nigeria. And hearing, walking the talk, as someone just mentioned, so I think this, this is just my thoughts for um, kind of an overview, yeah, nothing more, thank you.
Wow, those were very great um, suggestions. We really, really, really will be taking that away and working on that because but what you just said, driving traffic to the website is actually something that could sell itself and disseminate the right information for our people. So it's something we definitely will take in the way.
Yeah, interestingly, I work in the e-commerce, and I know this is something that every brand, every customer is meeting us to kind of drive traffic, drive traffic to that website. And that is where you get, it's, I mean, this, we're in the age of more digitalized marketing, right? So pulling people to the website and then even having a way we can track visitors to this site per week, per month, and then you know what areas they're going to, is it the, uh, the Nigerian community that, with restaurants or business owners, uh, medical professionals, those different kind of uh, areas, something where we can identify. And in that way, I think that we also will be able to identify what are the topics we wanna discuss. If we know that a lot of people are pulled into um, trying to know first time, home buyers, mod gauge. Uh, you know, these things will kind of draw the line and say, okay, a lot of people are visiting this area of this website. How about we kind of provide more information, a seminar, as anything around that area, yeah.
Okay. And if I heard correctly, I think from your, from, from, I see your passion, I see your voice, I see, I see the drive in you, I think, I'm gonna take it upon myself, I think with the power vested in me, we'll be, we'll be contacting you for also drive that vision.
All right, I hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely, uh, would appreciate if you can drop your, your um, email, so definitely contact you. Thank you so much for also volunteering, this means a lot. I did you let me wanna say something?
We have his details, don't worry, it can run anywhere.
That sounds great. Okay, we have more hands up?
Yes.
We were supposed to be done at six forty-five?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. If you have all questions, please raise up, raise up your hands so we know because we are, we are pressed for time. But we're gonna definitely take all the questions, do not worry. Um, C H O, please, you have the floor.
Okay, my name is Chinonso.
Okay, Chinonso.
So I wanna add about the employment. The volunteering is good, networking is good, but until a time when the Nigerians decide to carry ourselves along, like help come together as Nigerians and lift everyone. That's when we will get to that level when it is easy for every Nigerian to get good employment. When those at the managerial level, especially those that are hiring managers that are on interview panel, decide, especially if you see a Nigerian, you decide that the Nigerian should get that job. Why I'm saying this is that in this country, you will come into an I T department, especially in public sector where I work, from the senior manager, maybe the director, senior manager, everyone there, they're all Chinese, are they better than us? Where we come from, we are, we must, uh, like um, tribalism is a thing. Way back home, it is difficult for us to get into the, maybe the particular career we want to, and that's tribalism is part of it. Yes, we shouldn't make it difficult when people come to Canada too. And it is only if we get people in, that's when in future, many Nigerians will also be at the managerial level, be at the hiring level, and employ more Nigerians. If we use this platform to decide that those that are at managerial level will make sure that every Nigerian that comes into your interview team, panel, that they get employed, that's when we will get up there. The Chinese are doing it, the Indians are doing it, they're not better than us. If you get to see a Nigerian in the, in the panel, you can advise them on what to do. Most Nigerians, they have fifteen years of banking experience, and they come here and become tellers, why? What they need is just one training or one certification, and they get in as financial analysts. Why would we be doing that to ourselves? Until we come together and say that any time you have an, an opportunity to get a Nigerian in, get her in, get her what, give her what is required, him or her, let him or her know what is required. The Indians and the Chinese, they are not better than us. It's just because we believe that things are supposed to be difficult before it gets easy. It shouldn't be difficult. We are all educated and professionals back home, and we come here, we suffer. We go through a lot to get where we are supposed to be because no one has our name in their mouths. Let us get our people up there, everyone you see, get them in, give them the training they need. It may just be a training, and they get to where they were back home. Let us not continue feeling that it is difficult to get to that level, no, it is not. So we, we can use this platform and decide on that. I don't know how these Chinese are doing it, but they are doing it. You will come into TD branch that is a market, from the branch manager down to everyone there is Chinese, why? But you can't see a particular branch where everyone is black, let alone being only Nigerian. We can do it if we want. If we do that in the next ten years, people that are coming in will have Nigerians at managerial level, it will be easy for them to come in. That's my take, thank you.
Can I, can I jump in here and provide some, some, some um, info for Chinonso and maybe for every one of us here as well? One minute. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, so um, what Chinonso said is super true. And uh, one of the things I tell a lot of people is that, when you ask for a referral from someone in a company, does the referral just stop at, oh, your phone number, your email, and your position? I feel that that's where most referrals stop. I can tell you for the Chinese, because I've been very, very tightly knit with them, what they do is, if you're referring, for example, if I'm referring Chinonso as a Chinese, Chinonso will send me the resume. I will sit Chinonso down, tell Chinonso everything about my organization. I'll review her resume, tell her what she needs to put there, what she doesn't need to put there. Kind of screen her for, for that particular position. And then she has better chances of getting into that role. And that is what I started doing actually in my current company. So then that the HR, they reached out to me and they told me that, um, uh, probably I should just let people throw in resume because most of my recommendations to different roles in the company were actually highly acknowledged, and the success rate was almost like almost ninety-five to eighty percent. So a lot of people thought that, that my recommendations was being monopolized. So HR just, it was just a suggestion, but I was happy that I was able to, to provide that high level of encouragement to the Nigerians. And by the way, these people were Nigerians, they were not like any other persons, yeah. So when anybody reached out to me for a role, I sit the person, give that person like a thirty minutes first for draft of that resume, another thirty minutes for finals, and then I send them information of what they need to put in their resume before I provide recommendations, before I um, I fill the referral form for HR to kind of look into it. I think this is, this is one of the things we need to do as a, as a professional culture in helping our fellow Nigerians. So it's not just us just giving the person, oh, this is my, uh, this is my email, uh, this is my phone number. Put it, put me in your, i- i- in your application that I'm referring you, no, it doesn't work that way. So we need to take that extra um, time and extra energy to kind of really provide more support for that individual to have increased success rates, let's just put it that way, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. So if, if, if I heard, from what I hear, you're, you're saying, in as much as one, one, well, referral, go out, go further to tell, to educate the, the potential employer, employee to what to expect. Maybe at interview, how to design the resume, and how to also show up.
Yes, yes, these, these are very important, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Can I, can I just get a move over to, to Chipping? He's been raised, he's raised his hand, so that his hand is not paying him, so I'm using your words.
I'm so sorry, Imobo, you have the floor. Are you there?
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, um, thanks a lot. My name is Imobo, I mean, you've come out here in Canada. Um, the last speaker, Chinonso, took the words out of my mouth. Um, I think the challenges we face here in Canada, aside the weather and the culture, is actually understanding what we need to do to be successful here in Canada. You know, coming from Nigeria and with all our years of experience, we come here and we find out that things are not the way we expected them to be. So we actually need direction, we actually need guidance, we actually need mentoring, and I'm actually happy that we're having this um, conversation. Um, I think that those who have gone ahead of us ten years, fifteen years in Canada and in various industries have a wealth of experience which needs to be um, passed down to those of us newcomers. And I think this platform is a very good one to achieve that. You know, um, in terms of working in various industries, like I have, I am from banking, I have a banking background, but I'm not working in a bank at the moment, uh, for personal reasons anyway, but then again, maybe if, before coming to Canada or upon landing here in Canada, I had a mentor that could guide me or tell me, could this is what I need to do, and so on and so forth, I probably work in a bank. But what I'm saying in essence is, um, it's something we actually need to have a deep dive and you look into, how can we as Nigerians help one another to make it here in Canada? You, there's this impression that we don't look out for each other, um, compared to other cultures, which um, we see in virtually every other organization. You know, and uh, it's something that is, 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 is a concern. And I think um, CMP should be able to address that somewhere somehow, um, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, just one, 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 one second. Thank you so much, Emmanuel, Chinonso, my, Arrebi. That's what she calls me, Arrebi, and um, I'm mobile, thank you so much. Um, I just wanna say one thing, uh, somebody said, um, you know, people that have had ten years experience, if they can leave to other people, and again, that's what we do at CMP. Um, there's one of my friends that said, it would never apply to an organization where it doesn't know anybody in. And because it knows people there, it's been able to actually get in. So I promise to everybody in the community, uh, any Nigerian profession, whether you're international students, whether you're refugee, it doesn't matter. And like whether you're a mature student, provided you're Nigerian, and of African descent for that matters. If we know you are going into a company, reach out to us because we have a lot of people in different companies that can refer you. And thank you, Emmanuel, for sharing what you do, that is what I do too. It's not just about saying, use my name, it's about going above and beyond. So we are going to go above and beyond to refer you. Guess what? Canada has already done the screening for you, I don't need to do any other screen. If you did not qualify, you won't be here, and we know that. So I don't need to do any other screening, I already know you qualify. And I will tell you one thing, you might have applied before and you did not enter. Please have change, apply again, get someone to refer you, please. And I'll just pass it back to patience.
Wow, thank you, thank you. She's, uh i- 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 if we count the number of times Adigisela said. Our vision, which is just centers of, we are here to lift up one another. I'm sure we, we, we'll be rich because she, she has said it over and over again, which is so right. We are actually here to lift up one another. And if you've applied before, you got a no. Remember, no means next opportunity. It doesn't mean never. It only means next opportunity. Next door is going to be opened up. So please and please and please, and thank you Chinonso, thank you Manuel for what you, what you both said. These are pressing issues that bothers the majority of Nigerians. But just remember, C N P is there to make your story memorable to one. We have, we are way, way, way past time. Do we have any other questions? Before we go into our closing remarks? Any other contribution? So somebody said Imabo has a point here. How can we also provide expertise to Nigerians before they come into Canada? Maybe some sessions can help provide the right info to our people before they come. This will also increase their commitment to this building, to, to the building this council when they arrive. I think I'll let um Adigisela handle that before we go into closing remarks.
I was actually typing out, gonna say, please refer us to many organizations that you know, a group of people that are trying to come into the country. Because yes, when they're better prepared, when you know what to do, uh when they know the norms, you know, they will be able to um settle in faster. So please refer us uh our emails, all our details are on the chat. If you just scroll all the way to the top. You'll see all the, all other ways you can connect with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so, so very much. At this point, I'm gonna call on Emmanuel to give us both of thanks and closing remarks. Um Emmanuel, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um. So in the vote of thanks, well, I like, we, we are simply like to give honor to who honors do. And thanks to the contributions from all our sponsors, we're able to continue to do multiple events. So our first goes to Deborah Holmes, who's run by Deborah Ojo, who's a realtor. Next is from Team Honda, Imano Anabongio, who is a member of. Next is, one at a time, please. Okay. Next is independent financial advisor, Toya Abiyoye, who provides the follows, who provides a series. Who fo- who provides prefer of services such as financial, education, planning, life and health insurance. Next is Mrs. Esther Abraham, who's a realtor, who can help you find the proper purchase of condo or semi that fits your needs. Right at home, which is run by Yemese Aladesu. Who is also a realtor who can help you find excellent prices and price yourself on an excellent service. Next is Sadebe Solutions Inc., which provides business consulting, business incorporation, bookkeeping, H R and payroll. Jane Eke, which who works with BMO and helps, which can help you find a proper mortgage that's right for you. And Thrive Relationship Coach, but which is run by Miss Bosse, which can help you with marriage makeover and faith-based counseling. One in town, which provides freshly baked goods that are also available for delivery. And Lighthouse Food, which provides African Caribbean food, groceries, whatever you need, gari, palm oil, chicken, fish. You name it, they can provide it for you. I S Palette, which provides freshly, fresh taste at a great price. As well as Kins for pixel photography, which can help you with your professional touch-ups, events and portraits. And this is for our upcoming event, which is for our newcomers workshop, which will be anchored and hosted by Miss Patience. Miss Adigisela Tiba and Miss Avamide. And that is scheduled for the Saturday, April twenty-fourth, five to seven, which will be focused on navigating the career sites. Your elevator pitch, workplace culture and more. And as well as our mentor program, which will be starting Saturday, May eighth of this year. Which will hoping to match you and connect the mentor to explore career paths, like goals, develop contact and identify resources. As you can see, these are our social media handles and our contact information. These are also have been provided within our chat. So please copy and reach out to us with whatever needs or questions you have. Thank you so much to everyone who took their time to come out and see us. We thank you for participating, like our questions and answers went far beyond expectations as well as the engagement and the advice as well. And I also want to th- thank the team for answering all the questions and clearing up any discrepancies that were seen or any just. Just random things that even people did not have, who did not want to talk where the answers were also able to be asked. Over to you, Patience.
Wow, thank you so much for that, Emmanuel. Thank you for shouting out our corporate sponsors. They are part of the reasons why we're here. Thank you so much. And again, thank you everybody for showing up. This was so interesting. This was so interactive. Actually, I didn't even know the outcome would be this phenomenal. Thank you, thank you so very much. Uh we are almost, almost at the last minute. I want the president to finally buy, buy us all out. Thank you so much, everyone for showing up.
Thank you again, and thank you Patience for moderating. Thank you for everybody that participated. This was really, really uh high opening. And we're so happy that you actually came up with various wonderful ideas and we promise you, we'll take it away. And please, if you know that you want to volunteer, we need people. We need people to volunteer, uh their skills. Uh yes, you may be new to Canada, but that doesn't mean you don't have skills. Like I said, Canada has already validated you. They know you have the experience, you have the skills, you have the education. Please come, join us, work with us, let's volunteer together. A lot of words were shared, volunteer. Voluntarism is key. Um there are two people uh in C N P that I know that won uh what we call R V C Global Citizen Award. The Global Citizen Award is given to people that go above and beyond volunteering. Guess what? You can learn from them. Show up. A lot of people talk about showing up. We need to show up. We can't just put our head down, do nine to five and say it's just all about the money. It has to be beyond the money. Uh I'm, a lot of leaders will be on vacation, but they'll still be joining meetings. Why? Because that's what leaders do. We have to go beyond, it's just my nine to five, that's all I can do. Give your time. When you give your time, people will remember you. People will remember your name. People will have your names in their mouth because they know it's not just about what's in it for you. Times have changed. A lot of people came in, I can be sixteen years ago, believe me, sixteen years ago, they would not give credit card to new immigrants. They don't. If you want a credit card, you put your money down. They call it secured credit card. The times have changed. Imagine somebody that was not given credit card then, that person can say, no, 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 they won't give you a credit card. And they did not give mortgages back then too. But now they give mortgages. You just gotta be able to put down a certain percentage. Times have changed. So yes, the people that you meet are important, they are super important, but they may not know everything you need to know. So it's important for you to get out of your comfort zone and be comfortable at being uncomfortable. Reach out, go to conferences, get to know organizations that are doing things that will add value to you. Um help review resume and just, you know, picking things that uh where, where, where talked about. And that's some of the things that the mentors will do. Um you know, watch uh interview skills. You know, those are some of the things that your mentors will do. Again, like I said, even when the mentoring is not in progress, if you meet somebody, please reach out to C N P. We're here to support. And if we don't have, we'll look beyond C N P. Because there's so many other organizations doing wonderful things in Canada and that they're Nigerian based. Um we, uh somebody said we need to know what we need to do to succeed. Again, it's through networking, it's through reaching out to people. You uh will be able to direct you. So direction, guidance, and um I want us again reinforce the fact that change starts with you and I. Some of the things I've noticed in Canada, even myself, the fact that when some people are high up there, they're Nigerians or Africans, not necessarily Nigerians, or just exotic people like us. The tendency is they tend not to hire people that look like them because they feel everybody else looking at them. They feel whole highs on them. But the question I ask people is, those people that you are not hiring, is it for the fact that they're not qualified? Because a Caucasian person would not think like that. They will hire based on qualification. So why are we not hiring ourselves? We need to hire ourselves. So this is a chat to everybody here. If you are in position to hire someone today. And you see someone that looks like you and they qualify. All you need to do, all you need to know is that they qualify. And not only that, even if they don't qualify, can you coach them to qualify? If we can coach them to qualify, the onus is on all of us to do that. So let's take it a day at a time, a step at a time and support each other. And before you know it, we're all gonna be up there. And the point is this, we don't, so, so the fact that I had it hard does not mean somebody else needs to have it hard. That's why we have this organization. And on that, I'm just gonna say thank you again. We really, really appreciate you joining. And even staying till after the fact, thank you so much. And we know that together, we're gonna be better. And thank you for all the participation and all the questions. We will take them away, we will implement and we will get back to you.